Welcome to the Whittier Regional School Committee and if you would all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Do we have anybody for public comment tonight? No, you're all, okay, you're all set.
Madam Chair.
Lost my pen, yes.
I move the approval of December 12th minutes of the regular school committee meeting.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
One, two abstentions, three abstentions. Charlie, Lisa, and Tony. And we'll go on to the Treasurer's Report. Has everybody had a chance to look at it? We need to vote to accept that, please.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. There is no old business. Andrew, you're up.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Lynch, and all our school committee members. First off, I would like to wish you all a very happy and healthy New Year. The Multicultural Club Coats for Kids Drive received over fifty coats and jackets to help needy families in our area, thanks to all of your participation in this worthwhile event. Student Government was involved with coordinating a school fundraiser as well as volunteering to participate in a fundraiser for Salisbury Beach. During the month of December, members of the student government helped sell raffle tickets at the Salisbury Sea Festival Trees to raise money to bring back the historical carousel to Salisbury Beach. Student Government also capped off the holiday season at Whittier Tech by executing our new fundraiser, Holiday Candygrams. The goal was to spread holiday cheer and good tidings to friends and loved ones, but more importantly, all the money raised was donated to the Whittier Holiday Fund to benefit those in need of their community. They were able to raise close to $250. Peer leaders helped student government with the Candygram fundraiser. They also helped hold signs welcoming Charlie Baker at the pep rally. Next day will be helping out during the freshman halftime show. Peer leaders will all be running interactive activities that demonstrate ways to be a successful student at Whittier Tech. DECA will compete at the district level on Thursday at Merrimack College. There will be an update for the state's placement in February. Interact Club members had their community involvement skills on full displays as volunteers at the winter concert where they served as ushers and assisted with gift basket sales. They are hoping to have a new event in February to help out and get out into their community. The peer-to-peer club's annual canned food drive collected 1,680 canned goods which will be donated to our neighbor's table to help feed the needy in our community. Machine Tech collected 1,011 of the canned goods which won them a breakfast delivered to their homeroom before the holiday break, and they had the honor of displaying the winning plaque to their shop for another year, thanks to all who helped make this drive such a huge success. Key Club had a very busy December volunteering at multiple events and looking forward to a quieter January, but still looking to do community service. They are exploring the possibility of spending some time with the clients at the council on aging in Salisbury and helping out the Salvation Army. In addition, our members continue to do community service on an individual basis. Chess Club is still looking for more players. They've had a successful year so far with many varying skill levels are continuing to improve their gameplay while meeting every other Thursday. The Whittier Girls Basketball Team has been playing well, but the youth has shown late in the games. The team has been playing tough against many senior teams. Although they are facing many good teams, they're still putting up good fight and keeping it up in every game. The boys basketball team, or varsity basketball team, has faced some extremely tough competition, including some of the top teams in their league. While their record is less than what they were hoping for at 2-5, the team has been playing extremely hard and is representing Whittier well. The team has been in every game with all but one of the losses being by six points or less. The Whittier Tech Wrestling Team is still carrying thirty-six students, which is fantastic. Most of the younger are inexperienced but will benefit the program immensely in the coming years. The team is currently 7-4 with a CAC Conference matchup tonight against Greater Lawrence Tech. We will be attending at the Pelham Tournament this weekend and are hosting a youth dual tournament this Sunday here at the tech. And that's all I got for today, thank you.
Very good, thank you very much. Ms. Lynch.
Good evening, Madam Superintendent, members of the school committee. Tonight we call you for informational purposes are a cafeteria helper and two cafeteria cooks, Title I parent liaisons, clerical support for our health office, winter coaches and cheerleading, and evening school instructors. Budget update, the executive subcommittee met earlier this evening to discuss the FY20 budget. At this meeting, we began with a 4.83% increase which will reduce for the next executive subcommittee meeting in February. November MCAS update, the November retest results will be available at the end of January. We will be running a free English MCAS after-school program for grade 10 students from January 28th through March 25th. All grade 10 students are eligible to attend. On Tuesday, December 18th, I attended the North Shore Superintendent's Roundtable Luncheon with my administrative assistant Lisa. At this luncheon, I was able to celebrate all that Lisa ran does for me and for our Whittier students. Over the holiday, the work on the roof was completed in record time. We have a final meeting on Monday to review and make sure the roof piping project is completed and there are no further items on the punch list. I really want to thank Bob Hardy, he's the interim facilities manager for his hard work in making sure that that work was complete, and Tammy Dontrmont for all of her hard work making sure D-CAM and that we were doing this properly with our taxpayer money and getting this project complete in a timely manner. We wanted to make sure this was done before the snow started flying and we sort of lucked out, so it is complete. On Wednesday, January 22nd, Whittier hosted Governor Charlie Baker and Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito. I know many of you were at the event. One quote Governor Baker said to our students was, "In this school in particular and the career and technical schools in Massachusetts generally are among the very best in the country." And I couldn't have been more proud of our students and that, what, half an hour that he was in our building. He was able to visit our dental assisting program. There were many pictures online of Lieutenant Governor picking up the tools to do his teeth while he sat in the chair. I think everyone will agree, he's a very, standing next to me, he's very tall. So the pictures look kind of funny, but really the students, it was, you know, they just got back to school and in fifteen minutes, we had them all in the gym ready screaming for the governor, so it was really a wonderful visit and I think our school really shined. And I want to thank everybody for their help and especially Mr. Leganis for getting them all wild and crazy. It's a good thing you have toddlers.
You also, and you did a terrific job.
Oh, thank you.
It's really hard to come back on that first day to an event like that, it was just, it was awesome.
It was, it was wonderful. I remember back in the days, Mr. James and you were here, where we didn't do pep rallies.
Oh, no.
So it's kind of funny that we're doing a pep rally for the governor, you know, a few days later.
We just started about that.
It was kind of exciting, so, you know, it was, it was one of his inauguration, it was the first inauguration event for him.
Kickoff.
Yeah, and so it was really exciting and I was just proud of our students and proud that he chose Whittier to come to, to celebrate vocational education, so I really want to thank everybody that made it happen. It was special. And Rich Perselli was very particular about the music and the music definitely got everybody working, so thank you, Rich. Next is establishment of a scholarship for Havel Bank. Havel Bank is donating two $1,000 scholarships to benefit graduating students. I'd like to thank Thomas Mortimer, President and CEO of the bank. I respectfully request the school committee's acceptance of these two scholarships.
Move to accept. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, okay.
Next, I have two field trip requests. One is to Salem High School in Salem, New Hampshire for the first robotics competition. The dates of this competition are February 28th, March 1st, and March 2nd. It is not an overnight, but that first Friday, they'll have to leave school early and then the Saturday and Sunday, they'll be competing in Salem, New Hampshire.
Motion to approve.
Second, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
We have the proper paperwork.
The proper paperwork will be in before they leave.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, okay, great.
The second field trip request I have for you tonight is an overnight field trip. It's at Gillette Stadium, so lucky kids, but it's for the Pro Start Massachusetts Restaurant Association. We will have two students competing in this program, and that is February 11th through the 12th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
What was the competition again?
It's called Pro Start. It's with the restaurants, Restaurant Association of Massachusetts.
So it's the Culinary Arts?
Yes.
Okay.
I've just had a question, what's the accommodations do the students stay?
At Gillette Stadium, yeah.
Oh, there are accommodations now?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, there's a couple hotels.
Okay.
Wow.
I haven't been there in a while.
Any further discussion?
We have the proper paperwork.
The proper paperwork will be complete before they leave for the trip.
Thank you. Tell me we have another one.
They're staying at the Hilton Garden Inn at Patriots Place.
Ooh, sounds like it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, opposed? No? Okay.
Next, address some projects that we did in January. We went to the electrical program, went to Eagle City Hall, and they worked on the call light system, and they made necessary repairs in the city council chamber room. Community service, Culinary Arts provided food for Opportunity Works Christmas Party, Health Occupations provided assistance for clients at this annual event, the Culinary Arts Program provided cookies for foster children of the Merrimack Valley Annual Christmas Party and that's the annual donation. Ongoing, we'll be looking at the water department, carpentry will be working with the Havel Water Department, and then looking at a small trophy case in Newbury Court. And that's all I have for you this morning, well, this afternoon, this evening, how's that? Next, I have a presentation by Tia Roy. Tia is a former Whittier graduate, what year, Tia?
2011.
2011, I remember going to Mechanics Hall with you and your family, and you're going to give us a little presentation on community services that you're doing here at Whittier.
I stopped in at a Marine recruiter station a couple of months ago, and both of the Marine recruiters graduated Whittier but Tech.
See, there you go.
Are you going to win lists?
No, I was giving them some.
Just hanging around.
Coffee cups for the engine I'm working on.
Oh.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Maureen Lynch, Whittier Tech School Committee, Principal Chris Leganis, and everyone else in attendance. It is my pleasure to be here today to present to you on my dream job. It's not every day that you come in contact with someone who truly believes they have their dream job. My name is Tia Roy and I am a proud Whittier alumni of the class of 2011, and I also serve as a community services and post-secondary early college programs advisor here at Whittier Tech. I have been engaged in a number of different initiatives, services, and projects over the past five months in my position, and I've chose to categorize them as follows for my presentation tonight. They include alumni relations, community events and partnerships, evening education programs, early college, and student services. All of these areas are vital to not only student success, but the overall success of the institution here at Whittier Tech. They say that pictures are worth a thousand words, and I couldn't agree more for this picture. We have identified here at Whittier Tech that at least twenty of our staff members also identify as Whittier alumni, and that is so very telling. That tells a story of pride, passion, and loyalty, and I am so honored to be part of this community. Alumni are really at the core of institutions of higher education and even more so at the high school. These are some of the projects I've been working on over the past five months to really engage our large alumni population. As you walked in, you may have seen the Alumni Spotlight Series posters I have been creating. This has been an initiative where I reach out to Whittier alumni and in turn, they reach out to me to update Whittier as to what they're doing personally, professionally, and academically. We are currently working to create a Alumni Spotlight Wall in the Whittier lobby where we can have these Spotlight Series posters interchangeable throughout the course of the year. We can have different themes for vocational cluster, highlighting different towns, highlighting different years, and so on. On Friday, January 25th, we will have our eighth non-traditional alumni panel event where we invite alumni to come back and address our freshman class as they are making their shop selection. So we have three males and three females who are going to come back and reflect on their journey. I'm continuously looking for additional ways we can engage alumni with current Whittier offerings, so looking at our winter concert or our sports banquet and seeing how we can get alumni back to share messages and really engage with our community here at Whittier Tech. My overall goal is really to develop an alumni database and to create an e-newsletter that we can share either monthly or bimonthly with our alumni population. This e-newsletter could include events that are happening here at Whittier, alumni jobs in the community, ways to get involved with our foundation, and really just to keep the communication lines open. Community members are fascinated as to what happens inside a vocational technical high school and specifically what happens within Whittier Tech. Here you'll see a photo of our machine technology instructor, Paul Moskowitz, speaking with members of the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard. He's explained to students the skills that students learn in his shop area and how they're prepared for employment when they leave Whittier. Specifically looking at organizations such as the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard, we have identified that students are interested in working for companies such as the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard. We are working on a direct hire partnership with the organization so that when students apply to this organization or organizations similar, they're able to get skills or credentials waived because of what they've learned here at Whittier. They're also able to, are able to more quickly go through the application process as it is currently very, very lengthy, so our students would have an advantage there. The photo here you will see is a trip that I coordinated between Northern Essex Community College and our senior cosmetology program. On the right side, you will see students from Northern Essex Community College, and on the left are our students. And they really benefited from this experience because they were able to get outside of the classroom into a non-traditional environment. They attended a stress relief workshop where they were able to offer manicures to Northern Essex Community College students and to network with them and chat about what it's like to be a college student, and to share what it is that they've been learning and specializing in for the past four years. In addition to planning other community events and partnerships, I had the pleasure of working with Beverly DeSalvo, our vocational coordinator here at Whittier Tech, on our fall 2018 open house. My previous employment experience is with institutions of higher education, so colleges and universities, so I really tried to bring that feel to our open house by introducing uniform tablecloths for each of our areas, pop-up banners to draw the crowd over, and of course, our alumni spotlights on display. Incredible things happen here at Whittier Tech, and they don't just end at 2:03 PM. I've had the pleasure of working with Dave Cunningham, Director of Evening Education, on a variety of different evening school initiatives, and I'm excited to share with you what we are doing on that. Dave and I were able to promote and launch the Cosmetology Evening Program. This program started in October 2018, and we currently have seven students enrolled. And we did a lot of creative recruiting for this program. I specifically spearheaded and developed materials to allow us to present at local high school college fairs. So my previous experience as an admission counselor, I know that oftentimes many seniors are indecisive when it comes to making post-graduation plans. And I believe a lot of the programs that we offer here at night, right now, allow our students to kind of dip their feet in and try to figure out what it is that they really want to pursue professionally or academically when they leave high school. I'm currently coordinating the effort to apply for the Chapter 74 Advanced Manufacturing Program. We will have our application out next week for that. And I contributed to the VA application and approval process, which means that if students are interested in taking our evening education courses and also identify as a veteran, they're able to access their GI Bill or any other benefits to take our evening education courses. Our students go off to do amazing things. We know that they go off to college, they go off to work, they go off to the military, and sometimes they do a combination of all those things. This gives you a quick glimpse of students who are taking college classes while they're still in high school. This is through our early college programs that I've been able to work with. I'm currently coordinating alongside Patty Lowell, our concurrent enrollment partnership with Northern Essex Community College. Students in our machine technology, CAD drafting, and electronics/robotics vocational areas are able to earn college credit for the vocational areas that they're in, and they're also able to earn college credit and experience in the other vocational areas within this partnership. This all leads to Northern Essex Community College's Advanced Manufacturing Certificate Program. I'm consistently advertising early college opportunities here at Whittier through consistent marketing and classroom visits. And I've also worked alongside our vocational coordinators to create an Earn College Credit Here poster initiative. So when our underclassmen are walking through the halls here at Whittier and they enter a new vocational area or a math or English classroom, they're able to see an Earn College Credit Here poster as they walk into the classroom. And that allows them to prompt a conversation with students in that area or the vocational instructor to say, "Hey, how can I earn college credit in this room?" We are also consistently identifying other local institutions where articulation agreements can be created. I have had the pleasure over the past five months of working one-on-one with our students, and I find that they're fascinated when I share with them that I too was once in their shoes. So our students are really amazing, and I find that they connect with all of our staff here, and they really are fascinated when they find that there are other Whittier alumni who work here. When I left Whittier in 2011 as a senior and went off to college, I left here with between $8,000 and $10,000 worth of scholarships. So what I've done over the past few months is offered scholarship assistance to our students. So I meet individually with our students and identify which scholarships they're eligible for, sit with them and brainstorm what pieces of the application they need and how they can gather those within the timeframe needed. So I've had over thirty individual student appointments, and I'm also offering after-school workshops that happen on Tuesday afternoons. So those will be going on from January 8th through March 26th. I had the pleasure of presenting to over 1,000 eighth-grade students from ten schools about reasons to choose Whittier. These were so fun, the students loved it. They come in here and they tour our amazing building and our facilities, they have their milk and cookies in the cafeteria, and then they head upstairs and have a really engaging presentation from myself in the auditorium, looking at the application criteria and looking at all those reasons that vocational education is really the key to the future. I'm currently researching a full-time job database system for our students. This would specifically benefit our employment-bound students, our students who are looking at part-time jobs, student, our alumni who are still looking for employment, and this would also assist possibly with the posting of co-op jobs. So again, this is something that higher education institutions implement, and I'm researching possibilities as to whether or not that could be brought here. I am also supervising a marketing junior intern on a variety of projects, one of which she is entering a lot of the alumni database information so that we're able to get the e-newsletter out later this year. I have some alumni research to back all of the important things I'm saying regarding alumni, but at the end of the day, we just have to recognize that they make us feel good. When we invite our alumni back, they're able to take, stop and take a moment in the hustle and bustle of everyday life and just notice that they're doing something right. Our staff and administration are able to look at these alumni and say, "Hey, the life lessons they learned here, they took with them." And our current students are able to see the plethora of different avenues and opportunities that exist post-Whittier. So it's a win-win-win. According to the Council for Advancement and Support of Education, we know that alumni are institutions' most loyal supporters. They're also fundraising prospects, so we have our Whittier Tech Educational Foundation that our alumni are absolutely able to get involved with. We also know that they are our word-of-mouth marketing, so we know that our Whittier alumni have children who come to Whittier and have family members that come to Whittier, and this will just continue to be a cycle for the rest of time. They're great role models for our current students, that's why we're going on our eighth panel. Students love to hear from other alumni who were once in their shoes. And our alumni are international ambassadors, so we know that a lot of our alumni choose to stay in this area and promote our economy, which is fantastic. But we also know that a lot of our alumni are curious, and they explore the United States and even further. But at the end of the day, we know that they are and will always be a Whittier Wildcat, and whatever trade or skill they learned here, they're going to take with them wherever they go. As I close my presentation, I want to offer to you all a few of my skills and credentials as to why I believe I'm a perfect fit for this position and why it is so very important to the success of students in the community here at Whittier Tech. I think of Whittier very similarly to an institution of higher education. So if you think of Whittier, student makes a choice to come here, and then they choose to specialize in one area for four years. And then when graduation comes, they choose to either further explore that area or they choose to do something totally different. That's very similar to a student who chooses to go to college. A student who chooses to go to college identifies the place they want to go, and then ideally, they choose one thing to study, and they study that for four years, and then they choose to either continue studying that through graduate school, or they decide to go off to work or branch off completely different. My experience working in a variety of different institutional types within higher education and a lot of different functional areas or different offices really allows me to bring a different perspective to Whittier, to make sure we're always providing up-to-date resources and services to our students. I also have specialized expertise in career development. Here at Whittier, as you know, we are always working on your future, so we're working with students on their personal, professional, and career development. So through the National Career Development Association, I have my GCDF or my Global Career Development Facilitator license that I'm able to utilize when I meet individually with students. And at the end of the day, nobody can take away from you an ingrained passion that you have for something, and that passion that I have is for vocational education and specifically for this place we're all sitting in today. So I'd like to thank you so, so much for your time today. I'm really honored to be here, and I look forward to a long-lasting, successful career here at Whittier Tech.
I have a question, does anybody else have a question before I? Looking, looking at what you're going to be doing, it seems to overlap a lot with the Guidance Department, things that they're doing. Now, will you be working in tandem with Guidance, or are you branching off onto your own, and how is this all going to work out?
Yep, so I've been working collaboratively with Guidance on a lot of the initiatives that they, that they work on, so I'm regularly in a lot of their staff meetings, and when I proposed the idea of offering scholarship assistance to students, we talked about the importance of students meeting with Guidance for all related college matters, all related personal matters and social matters, and with me, they're specifically just meeting with me for scholarships. And the students know that, and it really takes something off of the Guidance Counselor's plate as well, so we're working collaboratively on that effort.
I think if I can just chime in a little bit.
Sure.
Tia fills a hole that we have in a bunch of different areas. Alumni relations is huge, and she's really taken that on. I follow her on Twitter, everyone should follow her on Twitter.
Yes.
But as you walk in today, you can see some of the work that she's done. That's phenomenal, the database, I think, is huge. It's been something that we've always wanted to do but have never done, and she's 100% right. We have people right here in our community that are experts about our school and what we do, and we should really tap into that expertise. But along with that, she is a former vocational student, and she really understands the importance of vocational ed, so she's really worked with Mr. Salvo on some of the vocational programs. She's also worked on concurrent enrollment with Northern Essex Community College. She's also worked on concurrent enrollment with Northern Essex Community College with Patty Lowell, so she's really filling some holes that we have had here for a long time, and really taking the program to this whole other level. So she's a little bit everywhere right now.
And how long have you been doing this, Tia?
So I started the role September 17th, 2018.
Oh, just, okay. I didn't think that I knew about it before. Okay. What am I missing? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Paul?
I just want to say that what I take away from your talk is your enthusiasm and energy, and most importantly, your imagination, to come up with, you know, lots of new ideas and keep trying new ones, or, you know, keep things fresh, and I think that's very important.
Thank you.
And it's nice to see your role so far. Wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Joanna.
So what's the best way for, you know, recent grads, you know, millennials operate a little bit differently. They don't use email and things like that very much. What's the best way? Is it following you on Twitter? Is that the best way to kind of get connected and find out what's going on and find out? Is it Twitter?
Yeah, Twitter is definitely where we're sharing a lot of the alumni spotlight and different alumni things right now. The main platform, once we have that started, will be the e-newsletter, but anyone who's interested, if you all know alumni and are familiar with them, and they would like to have...
My kids, yeah.
Yeah, they can email me directly. I will have cards later this evening for everyone. And my email is Troy, T-R-O-Y, at whittiertech.org.
It's on your card.
And it's on my card, and I will give you all one later this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chip, did you have a question?
Yeah, so you mentioned the Portsmouth Shipyard. Are you aware of their apprenticeship program? They have that in their P's. I just recently found out about that, actually, so...
Yes, yes. It's a new collaboration that they're working, that we are working with them on, and we're becoming aware of a lot of the different opportunities there, so we're excited about that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, go ahead, Carrie.
Not a question. Can't tell you how proud I am to see one of my former students doing so well with what you've been carrying. I'm just so proud of you.
Wouldn't be up here without you.
There.
You got the answer.
Tia's a real self-starter. She's really taken the job and really made it her own, and I didn't, you know, she's also very involved with our night school program, so she is a self-starter, and we just said, how about this, how about this? Okay. She just very quietly writes a little note, and the next thing I know, it's complete. So thank you so much, Tia. You've really done a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, where are we here? Okay, Mr. Leganis. Top that one.
I can tell you, I was her assistant principal. I never saw her up in the office, so we're proud of her. Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Lynch, rest of the school committee members. As we move along here through January, our staff and students are preparing for midterm exams that are going to take place, vocational academic exams, the 22nd through the 25th. During this time, our program advisor, now Tia Roy, our freshmen are going to be with the halftime show. If you remember the halftime show, Beverly DeSalvo would have that during that week. She is going to coordinate that, and administrators and staff will work with freshmen on career plans and various topics, including college and career readiness skills, portfolio development, peer mediation, peer leadership, and extracurricular activities. Also, the freshmen will listen to, as Tia said, a six-person guest speaker panel presentation all Whittier Tech alums on career opportunities in non-traditional shop areas and roles. Skills USA presentation will also be during that time. Vocational area commercial video. Tia's also come up with a Jeopardy game, and it sounds pretty cool, the questions based on exploratory experiences that our students have had so far. And also, the assistant principals, myself, and the PE Health Department Head, Roxanne Grover, we talked about the Above the Influence. We're going to have a talk with our freshmen on, it's going to be a vaping presentation during that time as well. So we're going to make sure that that's going to go through all the different grades, but during that time, that's going to be exclusive for the freshmen. And then on that Friday, the 25th, shop selections are going to be made. So it's here in January. So we're also preparing and updating the program of studies in order to build the master schedule for next year, in the next couple months. And I always talk about the Booster Club fundraisers. We have one going on right now, and with help of Amanda Crosby and Linda Sano, our marketing teachers, they're running a fundraiser. And what the fundraiser is, it consists of exclusive custom apparel. It's an online store that's open. If you go online at whittiertech.org, and it has really cool basketball, sweatshirts, Under Armour stuff, and wrestling, and a percentage goes back into our Booster Club areas and those sports. So we also have our online apparel that's there anyway, that they run through our Whittier Tech store, so, you know, check it out. It's some pretty neat stuff that we all... The sweatshirts are really nice. So that's all I have. You're welcome. Oh, I get it. Really? Thank you.
It's a very hard act to follow.
And I have to say, the credit, what credit is due, Ms. Lynch, last year came up with the idea of that pep rally for the governor, and as a result, he came back, so the idea won't...
They often look at me like I'm crazy, but crazy's good. We like crazy.
Pressure's on.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent, members of the committee. Happy New Year to everyone. I have a few things for you this evening. In your packet, it is that time of year, three months have passed since I last reported on the variance analysis. So this report shows from the month of July through December, so halfway through the fiscal year. The district is on track at this midpoint. We're in very good financial shape. And as you are used to seeing, accounts with available funds are highlighted in green, and can be used to offset any accounts with negative balances, which are highlighted in yellow. And the reason we sometimes go positive in negative is because we budget a good year to a year and a half before we actually use the funds, and things change and things happen, enrollments change, and shop requests change, and things like that. So there's always a lot of movement within, especially the supply accounts. Also in your packet, in tandem with this variance report, is a transfer request, which will provide the funding source for the Allied Health Center renovation, which we spoke to you about, I think, at the beginning, at the end of the summer. And on this variance report, I've highlighted those lines, the renovation account, which we will be putting the money into, is highlighted in blue, and that will be funded from savings from several accounts, which are highlighted in beige. Does anyone have any questions on the variance report? Mr. Early? Sure.
On the dental assisting, we only went with $5,500. And I know we're up, you know, I know we're up to 29, blah, 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 but why did we only put $5,000?
Well, again, we weren't quite sure, and we had some grants out there that we were using. So we primarily used a lot of money from the Perkins grant, but as with any startup, you don't know what you don't know. So, you know, we knew that we would have saved...
Have you got that covered?
We have that covered, yes.
How about the sporting?
Mr. Bradley needed to buy uniforms, so Mr. Leganis and I will be working with him on coming up with like a five-year plan, sort of like we do for the capital plan, so that I have a better idea as to when he needs the uniforms.
You've got that money covered, too?
I do.
Okay. And there was another question, which, the robotics and the masonry, you know, there's a lot of money still in there.
Yes.
$79,000 each.
We, when the...
Surplus there, or...
Want to address that, Ms. Lynch, or do you want me to?
So when we looked at electronics/robotics at the end of the year, the enrollment numbers did not meet the need to have instructors in those courses. So we actually had aides, we hired two aides and eliminated those two positions.
And that's what you were talking about earlier. Thank you. Good job.
Mr. Wood?
Not really concerned about the individual line items. For the end of the year, are you projecting where you need to be to have some surplus funds for the end of the year that we're not? Okay, well, good. Thank goodness you don't work in Haverhill anymore. We fire business managers for having a surplus, so thank you.
He's not kidding.
Got a bang.
Okay. Anything else?
You're right, I'm not kidding.
I can feel it.
So I'll go on to my second topic. Unless you'd like to approve the, I know it's out of order, unless you'd like to approve the transfer request at this time, since I was just speaking about it.
Second.
Any discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Transfer? Aye.
Thank you. The last thing I would like to ask you is, I would like to respectfully request your approval to establish two special revenue funds. In accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 71, and Chapter 71, 26, we are looking to establish a rental of school property funds and a school daycare fund. The school daycare fund will be used as a repository for tuition receipts from the childcare program, which Ms. Lynch has spoken about at length, and we will plan to open next fall. The rental of school property fund will be used for funds collected for rental of the building, any of the grounds, and any equipment that people may choose to rent from us. So we're, again, we expect whoever comes in here and provides childcare to probably be renting some space for us and reimbursing some of the costs of utilities and upkeep, as well as we're hoping that after the turf is completed, that we will have the opportunity to rent that out to people as well. So by law, you have to establish that.
I move the disadvantage's recommendation. Second.
Any discussion? Dick?
I have a quick question. Is this similar, this childcare, is this similar to the one that I was...
I believe so.
It's, a lot of school districts and a lot of colleges rent space.
Yeah.
So that a private entity can come in, or a nonprofit entity can come in and provide the daycare. So our plan is, is not to run the daycare facility, but to have an outside vendor running the daycare facility.
Are they going to have access to the whole school?
There will be a couple of classrooms.
Thank you.
Yep.
But they'll be in the building, right?
But they'll be in the building, yeah.
Joanna?
Back to the daycare. Will it have openings for both faculty as well as students?
I don't know. How's that for an answer? Definitely faculty, I don't know about students.
I would like to see... I would like to see students involved, myself.
Again, we will not be running the daycare facility. It will be an outside vendor running the daycare facility.
Many of the high schools that do provide daycare allow their students to bring their children, because it enhances the ability for those kids to stay in school if the little ones are there. And so hopefully, that'll be something that they will consider when we do open the program.
No, not just making it a consideration, I would like to see it be a part of the deal.
I'm not sure I can do that. I, you know, this is a, this would be going out to bid, and it would be the best bid result. If I was running the daycare facility, that would be one thing, but I will not, Whittier Tech will not be running the daycare facility. We're just renting the space.
But we, don't we give the bid, they have to know what they're dealing with? I mean, we're going to have 10 babies or 20 babies. They don't, I don't know why they would care whether it's a faculty member's baby or a student's baby.
I guess, Mr. Tucker, I'm not prepared to answer that question. I'm not prepared to answer it yes or no. I haven't looked into it. All I can say, it is an outside company or organization that will be running the daycare facility, and, you know, as soon as we go out to bid, I can let you know.
Right, okay. Just keep the stuff on that.
So who's going to draw up the specs for this?
Ms. Dontromont and Ms. Cosmos, along with the vocational coordinator and myself.
Do you even have a template from someplace, or did somebody else use?
We usually, when we do RFPs, we usually ask for samples from other districts, so we'll probably combine some.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Joanna?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify or understand. When you said it was, it's for the childcare program, did you mean that students would use it as one of their co-op opportunities?
No. So I guess I'm not prepared to talk about the childcare. I'm just opening up an account to get started.
An account, and then we'll discuss it later.
Right, so I, when we are further along in the process, I will have a presentation on the childcare facility and exactly what we're doing, but I, I'm not prepared to answer...
So right now, it's, we're just setting up the fund?
Yes.
I make a motion to accept.
I already did.
We already, yeah. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye. Doing them both at the same time?
It was presented as two at once.
Were they?
No, I don't know.
That was just the, that was just the daycare.
I would vote them separately. I would vote them separately.
Yeah.
But his motion was to take, to accept both. So that's how he presented, but he made a motion to accept both, which just passed.
Good with that?
I think it should be individually.
So then he has to, he has to withdraw the motion?
Motion for reconsideration from somebody.
Whoever voted in the affirmative, which is all of us, can ask for reconsideration.
I would move the first fund first, the rental of school property first. I'd move that for approval.
Second.
We need a motion for reconsideration.
Yeah.
Right, I just asked for that.
Motion for reconsideration.
We need to have a motion to reconsider first. We have to rescind that.
I make them.
Okay, second.
I would if I would, I'm the maker of the motion. Can I just withdraw?
We've already voted on it.
Already voted.
Okay.
Scott, you made a motion, right?
I made a motion to reconsider his motion that already passed.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now let's start fresh.
One at a time.
I'd move the rental property fund. You accept it?
Second.
On the recommendation?
Okay, any discussion on that particular one? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the school daycare.
I make a motion, the daycare fund is presented by the business manager.
Second.
Any discussion on that one?
Yeah, that will be referred to as Chapter 71, Section 26(c). Is that correct?
Yep, yes, I think so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Further discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sorry for the confusion.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So for February, I'd like to talk about the February meeting if I could. I'm concerned that we may not have a quorum. I won't be here, Joanne won't be here, Dave won't be here. Will the rest of you, are you fairly...
I will be here live and in color.
Yes. All right. Dick, can you make it the February?
What's the date on that one?
13.
13?
13. Yes, I will.
Yeah, Scott, you can, Lisa, you think you're going to make it?
Yeah.
Yeah? Charlie, are you? Really? Paul?
Oh, yeah.
All right. Tony, you think you, and Joanne? Yep. All right, I think we're going to be all set then. All right, thank you very much.
Brett, you'll have to run that meeting.
You'll be all right.
He'll be fine. He'll do a better job than I do. All right. So what we're going to do in February is going to review the budget, obviously, and we need a vote on the new standard mileage rate. Did everybody get a chance to look at that?
Yep, move approval.
Second.
Second, discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, Executive Subcommittee, I think we're pretty much, we met tonight at 5:00. And Maureen presented the budget, what was it, 4.83?
Yep.
4.83 so far is an increase, and we've asked her to look at that and bring it down if she can. if she can. Anything else you want to?
We'll meet again, the next meeting will be meeting at 5:30.
Okay. All right.
I do.
I don't know why that.
It was turning shut it off.
Okay. All right. So that pretty much covers that. Joanne, instructional personnel?
We have not met, and I don't think we need a meeting till possibly spring.
Yeah, maybe early spring. I don't know what your schedule looks like, but looking at program of studies, if there's any changes to that, I'd like to have your approval.
May?
Okay.
Put it on the May agenda.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Plant operations, Mr. Tucker?
We met just before the meeting tonight, and we looked at a electronic sign that we'll be putting out in the front of the building. We agreed on a, I think it was 90 inches wide, just a big, like a four-by-eight sign with LED, and it can have motion and pictures and just about anything you'd want. You can program it. So I think they're going to move forward with that. And our masonry department's doing the brick work and up the sides and the tops. So they got, you, you may have seen the work going on up by the guard shack.
Where will the sign be?
Up by the guard shack. As you, just as you, just as you pull in.
That's where it is going to be.
If you were to stop at the guard shack, it would be right in front of you.
Yeah, we had to stop as the ground got frozen. So the little project will begin again in the spring.
Okay. All right.
So that was all.
Okay. Salary and negotiations, Mr. Early?
We have not met. I don't believe there's anything on the table right now.
I would like to have a meeting to look at the interim plant facility manager and providing him a contract.
You want to make it, um?
I looked at January 16th or the 23rd.
The what?
January 16th or the 23rd.
Whatever one is easier for you. It doesn't matter.
Okay. Who else is on that committee?
Me.
Got who? I, no, I think I got booted off that committee. I voted no too many times.
Not your only vote.
Charlie, you on that committee?
No.
I think it's, uh, which one?
Brent, Brent is.
16th or the 23rd?
You all said Gary could be there.
Gary, come on that.
16th, good.
Sorry, which one?
16th or the 23rd?
What time?
Whatever works for you guys. Do you want to do a 3 o'clock or a 3:30?
I could not do that.
Okay.
Actually, it was you, Charlie, that booted me off that committee.
6 o'clock?
I'm, I'm open. It doesn't matter. We're pro-dos.
Sorry.
6 o'clock on the 16th?
You want to do it in the evening or during the day?
Well, Lisa, what time can you come?
Um, I don't know. I got a 3 o'clock appointment, so.
Oh.
That could be a long time.
5 o'clock? 5 o'clock on the 16th? Will that work? Two hours?
Probably, yeah.
Okay.
You'll send that out to us?
Yep.
Thank you.
That's back to one second. We can try.
And policy, Mr. Irving?
We met this evening, and we went over, there's a brief policy on rentals of the building. So we took a look at that, and also procedures that went with it, which we have about three pages, two and a half, three pages of procedure. And we voted to move that ahead to the full body pending insurance and, and lawyer review. We were concerned a little bit about certain liability, so we want to make sure we pass the attorney, the attorney, school attorney and so on. So that's going to be sent to the full committee. And I would assume that February, there'll be a first reading, March the second reading, and final approval of both the rentals.
Okay. Our next meeting dates, the executive subcommittee will meet, we just set that up, February 13th at 5:30. The regular school committee meeting is the same night at 6:30. And Brett will be hosting that evening.
Hey, Brett. Wonderful.
Thank you. And there is no new business posted, and we have no executive session. Do we have a motion? Thank you.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that? No, hearing none. All in favor?